I call to order the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four Adrian City Commission Meeting. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Benke.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All Commission Members present.
At this time, we will have public comment for items that are on the agenda. We will start inside the city chambers first. And just to reiterate, we need you to state your name and place of residence. And to also let you know, this is public comment, which means it's not dialogue back and forth. You are just commenting and not to expect any comments back. If you have any questions or concerns, you can always talk to us after the meeting, but it's public comment. Okay, so I just want to make sure everybody understands that. So if you're asking a question, you won't get an answer. There is no dialogue to that. You will see the three-minute time limit. And for those on Zoom, after we have exhausted all public comment inside the city chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants with the same time restriction, and also please stating your name and place of residence. We will begin inside the chambers now.
My name's Richard Henning. I live in the city of Adrian. I'll break the ice here. So I'm here for the Adrian to appeal that point of sale thing that you guys were trying to run past us. Basically, you guys just need to vote it no now. I know there's a handful of you that all voted for it a few months back. Either vote for it no now, or we'll all vote for it no when we have the next election. I'm not sure when that's gonna be. I do know that there was more people that signed that petition than voted for mayor last time around, ma'am. So yeah, that's all I really have to say about that. So make the best decision for the community and not for yourselves, please. Thank you very much. And everybody have a great night.
Casey White, I'm Madison Township President. I'm also a homeowner in the city of Adrian, as well as the city is where I conduct the most of my business. So in regards to the point of sale ordinance, and I know that you're voting this evening, so I hope that the words that you hear tonight will play a factor in which way you vote. I've been told numerous times that this is being based off of the Monroe, the city of Monroe's point of sale ordinance. And so in trying to do my due diligence and follow up and see how that those results, you know, how that's played out, and what people there think, and how well it's working, and you know, I hope that you all have done your due diligence as well, to know that, you know, that policy was written in 2015 and never implemented. So what are we basing this off of? I mean, is Adrian gonna do the same? We're just gonna pass this ordinance and then not do anything with it? I mean, that's how it worked when we implemented the rental inspection. It took them 20 years to catch up. So I'm also extremely concerned with there not being a policy and procedure written yet. Everybody I've asked says it's not been done. There's been no meetings. Because why, you know, why would you do that before you know if we're actually going to have it? Except you're supposed to roll it out in less than two weeks. Do we have forms for people to fill out to apply for their inspection? A fee set? Do we know who's gonna hold the escrow account for these buyers and sellers to hold all that extra money that's coming to play? Where's, you know, have any of these things been thought of? How is this actually going to work? You know, I mean, when this rolls out, we've got so many homes on the market, they're all gonna have to rush out and have a home inspection right away. Do we have that kind of staff on hand to complete all of those? I mean, these are a lot of questions. I have so many concerns about how this is going to play out. I have stated over and over, I spent 10 years doing point of sale in so many other areas, and it has never gone smoothly. So my concern is not, you know, for my business. That's still gonna be there. I'm the one that helps to represent buyers and sellers. And so, you know, we have to advocate for them. They have no idea that this is coming. Just keep those words in mind. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Megan Greenwell. I'm a city of Adrian resident. I know that we've been pushing against the point of sale ordinance for a while now, and I have the best faith that it will be repealed tonight. And one thing I keep, you know, coming back to is like, what can we do about the blight situation that would make everyone feel better about the situation? I think that we need to, instead of penalize these people that are already down, excuse me, already down and out, we should be a community and stand behind them. What if we had someone that worked with the city, that talked to the code enforcement officer, that did the communication, was a liaison between the people that were most in need, and actually connected them with the people that have the blight? So maybe we have a veteran that needs a new roof. Maybe they can work with the VA and find that grant money, or find those dollars, or work with a church group, or work with within our community, especially, I know we have some grant money available as well for these projects. Who's gonna oversee those projects? Maybe we need somebody that works within the community, that goes to these houses, identifies the problem. They also could collect the data and tell us what these people actually need, that will make a difference long term. Instead of just putting a Band-Aid on the situation with the point of sale ordinance, maybe we need to actually understand what the problem is. Maybe it's not on money. Maybe it's mental health. I mean, I'm sure there's probably other major issues at hand here. If you open this position, I would apply tomorrow. We just need someone that can make those connections. I know a lot of church groups that would go out and they would do a community action day and solve a lot of these issues. Maybe it's just someone that doesn't know that they don't have to come down to City Hall to get a large, large item pickup from the city for their couch, and it's sitting on their front porch. Maybe they just need someone with a truck, a resource, some little, you know, old lady that doesn't know what to do in this situation, and that's just sitting there because she's stuck. Maybe we just need those little communications, those, you know, that information that we're missing right now. And I think that's the big problem with the point of sale. We're not, we're not working within our community. We're not, we're not trying to build each other up. We're just trying to make it a, I don't know, we're just trying to punish those that are already down now. And instead of building people up. That's how I view it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Mary Kleimer. I do live in the township of Adrian, but I'm a Realtor and represent everyone that sells in the city. To follow up on what she just said, I'm pretty sure that there was quite a bit of grant money given to you all, you know, to the city for blight. And I think that could be utilized better, and not targeting people, but helping people. And as one of the volunteers, I wanted to let you know that most of the citizens couldn't understand why this was not put on the November ballot. It would be over and done with by now, if you'd have just given them the voice at the time. And I didn't have a good answer for that, other than you thought you were representing them. And they, with over 2,200 signatures, column votes, disagreed. I'm 99% sure, like someone else said, that if you don't repeal it tonight, it'll be dead by the next election, because we're only getting more information out there, and more people are getting angry, that they don't feel this is the way to repair the blight issue we have. And again, keep in mind that you guys are up there representing the city of Adrian residents, not the city of Adrian offices, and you received less votes than what our petition got. So it might be time to vote for the citizens, not just the office. Thank you.
Harry Smith, city of Adrian. When you campaigned, you each spoke passionately about listening to the concerns of the people, conducting thorough research, and making decisions that prioritize the well-being of Adrian's residents. However, the implementation of the point of sale ordinance does not align with the principles you champion during your campaigns. These quotes have been pulled from past articles published in the Daily Telegram. Quote, "It's important for commissioners to hear what the people of the city have to say on every topic. City government is the closest thing to democracy at work." End quote. That was Commissioner Goss. The voices of Adrian residents are loud and clear on this issue. They do not support this ordinance. By choosing to keep it in place, it feels as though you are not honoring your promise to listen to the public and prioritize their concerns, nor honor the democratic process that has taken place regarding the referendum petition. Another quote, "There are some people who are unable to handle a $400 to $500 emergency. It would absolutely put them under. As commissioners, what can we do to help our people?" Commissioner Miller, that was you. "Forcing homeowners to comply with the financial demands of this ordinance directly contradicts your stated concern for those who are most vulnerable in our community. This ordinance doesn't help, it harms." And you also said, quote, "I'm not running for commission to put up roadblocks. I want to put up open doors," end quote. Yet this ordinance is the very definition of a roadblock, a barrier to homeownership disproportionately affecting first-time homebuyers, low-income and low-credit buyers, potentially our veterans and longtime residents who want to sell their homes without unnecessary red tape. Quote, "Balancing individual concerns with community concerns takes thought, research, time, and collaboration," end quote. Commissioner Roberts. "It appears this ordinance was enacted without adequate consideration of its impact on individual homeowners, sufficient input from the public, or collaboration with industry professionals." Quote, "We must be able to entice younger families to stay and live. I will value all stakeholders' needs and be thoughtful, reflective, and open in decision-making," end quote. Commissioner Schwartz. "This ordinance does the opposite, discourages younger families from investing in Adrian by creating additional financial hurdles to buying or selling a home. And if you truly want to attract and retain families, removing this ordinance is a step in the right direction and promotes a fair housing market that all can benefit from." Quote, "I hope to serve my community, listen even more, and be that voice for the community," end quote. Mayor Heath. "The community is speaking now, asking you to repeal this ordinance. To truly serve as their voice, you must act in alignment with their needs and concerns. Your words inspired trust and garnered you votes when you were elected. Tonight, I urge you to reflect on those commitments and align your actions with the promises you made to this community. Repealing the point of sale ordinance would not only restore that trust, but demonstrate your dedication to the principles of listening." Thank you.
My name is Janaye Cox. I'm from the city of Adrian. And I volunteered to be a canvasser, just because I'm retired. And I've never heard so many upset people regarding this point of sale issue. There are many people who said that things are getting out of hand with the city, the city commissioners are not working for the people. And I just would stand and listen to their criticism and asking people to come and voice their opinions to you people. And I've never heard so many people so upset about something like this, ever. They don't, how you can put something like this to into action without talking to the people of the city that you so for, said you were going to be working for? Just to let you know, there are quite a few people that are very upset. The biggest comment that is sad to hear is that a lot of people are saying it's time to move out of this city, that you don't have their backs. Thank you.
Russell Richards, city of Adrian. I believe the citizens of Adrian have spoken through the petition. I urge you tonight to repeal this ordinance. Thank you.
Hola. Okay. Ben Negron, on behalf of the all organization, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to talk to you today. Some really great stuff occurred on both sides.
Can you just say your place of residence? Sorry.
I'm sorry. Adrian, Michigan. So I really love the idea of having others help, churches help, and those kinds of things, right? Recently, we saw some posts out there, the Santa Heights University students were out there, the lacrosse kids were out there doing leaf raking and different things, impromptu, unplanned, made a phone call, got there. Aiden College did the same thing on the other side of town. This is the kind of stuff that we think about, what happens when we put our minds together for breakthrough ideas, rather than tried traditional kind of punitive measures, we might be able to make an impact, right, and make a difference in the lives of people positively. Later, you're gonna hear a presentation from folks at the Align Center for Workforce Development. So I won't steal any of their thunder, but we're a powerful bunch of people that are aligned with how do we make big things happen in the areas of our community that are most needy in a positive, not punitive way. I hope you will listen to that presentation. And then, if you haven't made up your mind to say no, after that presentation, maybe you'll say no. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants.
Ken Tokarczyk, city of Ann Arbor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm here to voice my concern about point of sale ordinance and the fact that you guys didn't do anything about it at the November fourth meeting. And I hope that you do the right thing today. Second thing I want to talk about is the appointments, and the fact that those appointments for the DDA were not posted, and we do not have copies of the applicant's letters of interest in the packet. And ask that you delay that until we get that on board. And then lastly, is the special assessment districts. You guys are gonna create special assessment districts for Church Street residents in the near coming future. And as you can see from what Mr. Elliott posted, you don't equitably do that for DDA special assessments. So I think you need to revisit your whole process. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, we will work on, move on to our work study session. At this time, I will hand it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So our first item for discussion tonight, it's the use of the funds that we have from our settlement with Crimson Holdings, which turned out to be only 50% of what we thought they were going to be due to their bankruptcy. So you'll recall, we had a town hall meeting at the pargrounds almost a year ago, and discussed with the residents of the area who attended, how those might be used. We kind of put that on the back burner, waiting for the rest of the money to come in, I think principally because, at least what I heard at that meeting, was nobody wanted just a distribution of the funds. They wanted it to be an impactful project that would benefit the citizens who were so impacted by the odor issues over there, you know, or in the area of that factory. And so now we know that because of the bankruptcy, the $50,000 that we received is likely all the money we're going to receive. And so it's probably time to decide how we want to use that. And the purpose of the discussion tonight is to try to move the ball forward to that point. A couple of things for you to think about, I'm not promoting any one thing, but to give you some ideas. I know something we heard at the town hall was sidewalk gaps, filling in sidewalk gaps. It has to be, you know, something that is within the, you know, the budget, if you will, or close to the budget of the funds that we have available. But, you know, still have a meaningful impact on the area. And so that was, that was something to think about. And to that end, I asked Matt, you know, to give me a budget number for that. It's about $45 a lineal foot for that. So for example, if you, one of the items, one of the ideas that came up was trying to get the sidewalk down Gulf Street to the corner at Beecher where the market is. That's about 1,800 feet. So about more than twice what we have available to accomplish that. You know, there are smaller areas that could be addressed. There's one along Michigan Street that the railroad owns. But an idea that came up when Matt and I were talking was, and this is a project that we've been thinking about, and others have brought forward as an idea as well, is continuing to extend the Quanis Trail into the east side, particularly to try to get it to either Dunlap Park, or ultimately up to Parish Park, which will become of more significance next year when we build the tunnel, and it's fully connected. And there isn't that obstacle there anymore getting across Main Street. So that is a more affordable thing, because it's asphalt, it's not as expensive as concrete construction. So that might also be something that you want to think about. Scott Westfall and I actually had meetings with Big C Lumber and the railroad last year about a potential route, and they were both open to that. And so there is a pathway to doing that. And then that would then run along that same area of Michigan Street, the south side of Michigan Street over to center, which does not have any sidewalk on it right now, and tends to be overgrown and not maintained by the railroad. So those are just a couple of ideas that we had that might spur some discussion. But I'll turn it over to y'all to talk about what you think we might want to do.
I think that given the change, we should go back and actually speak with the people, because it's a certain radius that gets the dispersment correct.
No, there was no certain rule. I mean, we set a radius in terms of the notices that we sent for the town hall meeting. But there is no particular rule in the consent judgment about who it needs to benefit, or even how it's to be used. It's in your discretion, you know, for the benefit of those of the citizens generally.
I just think that given the change from 100,000 to 50,000, that it's kind of drastic, and I think we need to get more input by the people directly impacted, and to see if they have any ideas. I like, I'm not saying I don't like the ideas that you had, but they may come up with something totally different that could benefit that area.
I would concur with Matt. I think the big takeaway from the last meeting was, and I think it was Commissioner Schwartz that recommended it, doing kind of those smaller group sessions with a chart paper and talking with people and kind of breaking down what some of those ideas are to, again, get that voice. And if we were leaning towards meeting with the residents one more time when we had $100,000, I think it's even more important to meet with the residents now that we're clear that there's only $50,000. And then just one other question besides that statement is, the penalty funds that were in the area of about 20 some thousand dollars, are those, do we have a clear direction on those? And are those being used, or do we need to address that as well?
Those are being held in Crimson Holdings in their attorney IOTA account. And they will not release them without an order from the bankruptcy court. So the bankruptcy trustee is going to try to claw that money back, because it was never paid. So we don't have a clear answer. But based on what I'm seeing, I do not think you could count on it.
Okay. So count for the 50, because we have it.
Correct.
Is it? Is it something that we could do in a, you know, can we ask for input through, you know, a survey or something like that, too, to get, we can throw out some of the ideas that we've had, that we gathered at the other meeting, and throw out some ideas that way, and, you know, other, and have people fill in, to have a stronger base to start a meeting with? Because I feel like the meeting we had was a little willy-nilly last time, and we didn't get any, we got a lot of input, which is great, but we didn't get any anywhere.
Yeah, I think more than anything, we got a lot of questions at that meeting about the situation that prevailed at that time with Crimson. Problem with the survey is you don't know who's taking the survey. You know, if you used it as predicate to another town hall, you know, like you say, maybe that could guide the discussion somewhat, or give a basis for guiding the discussion. But, you know, we tried to, by virtue of sending the notice to, I think it was a half-mile perimeter, if I remember correctly, you know, to make sure that the people that were there were the ones that had been directly impacted.
So we could maybe send one out ahead of time in that area to be sent back? I just, I feel like we need a stronger foundation to start with.
Could we send it with a notice?
Yeah, I mean, you could send like the QR code with the mailer, right? And so not otherwise advertise it, in which case, you know, you still can't be sure, but, you know, your odds are greater that the people taking the survey are the ones that you're trying to hear from.
I think any one of us who have been involved with some strategic planning know that there's, you know, a list of goals, and then everyone gets their orange circle that they get to, you know, put that on. And then you kind of get the visual representation from those people who are in the room, based on, you know, like you say, the survey feedback that can begin to drive some of that. And then where do the priorities begin to rise from there? And, you know, obviously, as we talk about issues with blight and helping the community on the east side, could some of those continue to be discussed, or options as well? And 50,000 doesn't go a long way, but, you know, bulk dumpster pickup right on the streets, you know, could be an option. You know, there's a lot of ideas that people could bring that would be affordable.
I think it would be very good to have a town hall again, just because it did change. The amount changed, and I would hate to make a decision that we think the trail's a great idea, or whatever it is that we think. I want them to decide. It affected them. It is, it was very horrible. I was, I work right by there. It was very horrible at times. And they couldn't have their windows open, and it was hot. And it was just, the smell was so bad. I really think they do need to have that voice, and they need to say what they want. And I love the idea of a survey. I love the idea of like, maybe they come in and say, yes, I like this, because maybe they didn't do the survey, or didn't have internet, and they can also voice. But it gives us that starting point. I think that was the problem, like you said, Commissioner Castleberry, with that other meeting, we just didn't have a, we didn't know. We didn't know what anybody wanted. And now we at least can say you wanted sidewalk, you know, you wanted to fill sidewalk gap. However, now it's only 50,000, we can't get it all the way down Gulf Street, and at least present those options down Gulf Street and at least present those options and, and put that out there for them to give input.
I, I, in studying, as Blake being one of our conversations and in studying that, um, a lot of, uh, University of Michigan did a big, uh, research study in 2023 and the broken window series says that nobody is looking, but busy streets reduce crime significantly. So connecting roads and streets is a, is a great way to, um, remediate light in our community. So if it's something that we need to put in to add to, to connect the community, I mean, I think it's a good investment. To help remediate light as well.
Well, is it your direction that we, we want to have another town hall? Start, start off with a survey?
Maybe not a town hall, but more of an open house where it's not, um, it's not us, you know, sitting at a day as someplace where we're upfront. Um, we just had, you know, we've had the parks, open house. We've had the, um, sit town square, open house where people can come in maybe chambers or someplace else. And there could be ideas on boards. And each one of us can be by one of those boards, talking them through that. And they go around and they look and maybe they come up with a new, a new board, a new idea for a new board. So that we have different dialogue with people, more one-on-one dialogue rather than someone, because not everyone's interested or able or, um, can actually get up in front of a group of 10 people, a hundred people and talk about what their ideas are. But they might be sitting in the audience going, I'd really like to say this, but I'm too afraid. Or I don't even know if anyone want to hear this. Um, so just a, a different vision of the town hall. We're still listening to the residents. Um, but maybe in a different way.
I'm glad you said that because I remember now a couple of people coming up to us after the meeting saying
Yeah.
That they wanted to share, but they didn't want to share in that venue.
Right. I thought there were a couple of people who came up to us afterwards who weren't comfortable speaking in front of the group. So I, I don't want that to happen again. And then after, you know, after the town hall, we have these conversations and we're like, wish we would have heard that half an hour ago. So.
Yeah, we're, we're in a much better, a much different place. The, the first town hall was, it, it was a very, very sad situation and people were really struggling to, to tell their stories. Their individual experiences about what was going on. And, uh, we're, we're moving to a different place. I don't like that we're moving to a different place with less money and, but I think it's important for us to start to look at where we can go. And I'm all for, if we find a project that, that really is something that's going to benefit them and and we're a little bit short, I think this is the place where we could possibly uh, help maybe pitch in a little bit or, or see how we can make it to the end by helping them. I don't know how financially we can do that, but I, I think it's something that we should consider.
I would also think it would be important again, um, we did not have a sound system there last time. Uh, so this is very difficult to hear with the fans and so forth. So making sure that, uh, there's a sound system. And this, you know, I, I do agree with the small groups as well, but, um, I think maybe at the end or somehow to have the bigger group, um, so that everyone can hear those great discussions that we hear. Um, cause I think there were a couple of people that I drug, I think I drug someone over to Commissioner Gauss and was like, listen, this idea, I think this is a great idea that she shared at the end. Um, so how we can take all the great things that we hear from the residents and put that voice in the room, maybe before we do a sticker activity or something like that.
Okay. Well, we'll work on a uh, on timing and a place and a survey that can precede, uh, the, the event and, uh, show that with you, uh, next time or when, whenever we have it ready.
And I, I don't, we probably wouldn't have time for this, but I would suggest we wait till the new year after the holidays.
Oh, for the event? Yeah. 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 For sure. Yep.
Okay. Next on our list, uh, is our discussion about bone pool. As you'll recall, we had, uh, the collaborative look at the, our facility with the goal of identifying, uh, year by year incremental improvements we can make to bring things back to, uh, good order there. Um, starting a little bit late, uh, with this off-season's improvement. So that may limit us a little bit, but, uh, uh, Jeremiah is here to, uh, uh, talk about this. I think we have the collaborative online too. Go ahead, Jeremiah.
Good evening. Um, as Greg said, um, currently online, we have Joe Bowen and Ray Mitchum from the collaborative. They're the, uh, the group that's been helping us out of Toledo. Um, I did want to highlight, I, I made up a quick little sheet for you just to give you a snapshot um, of how this past year went. Um, if, if you recall, right, two years ago, we didn't have, uh, we didn't have a boiler. We had a pump that was work, you know, barely working. Um, and so it really kind of limited us in what we could do. Um, from those conversations over a year ago, we talked about this phased approach, right? And, um, one of the first things that you see there, we have that phase one. We were able to do a new boiler and a new pump, um, new deck chairs and chases, pull vacuum, um, a few other items. Um, there's the cost, the investment we put in, but one of the good things about that investment that you all authorized, um, we were able to offer swim lessons for the first time because before, if you remember, it was always the YMCA. So we had some incremental um, additions there, made about 1,500, um, in swim lessons, made it over 8,000, um, and pool rentals from the YMCA meets practices, things of that nature. Um, we partnered with, uh, Adrian Public Schools, who's our, our good partner. They have an $8,000 pizza warmer. And so they loaned it to us for $1 a month for the summer. We made over $5,000 in selling pizza, right? So just as a, another fantastic little collaboration, uh, but that was due to, again, to us putting that investment that you all authorize um, in phase one. And what we're going to do now, it's time to talk about what phase two looks like. And, um, what we're going to do is we're going to address some ADA issues, accessibility concerns. And at this point, um, what we're doing is we set a priority list, um, and that's where the collaborative comes into play. They went through and did this assessment, made a priority list. And so that's what we're going to bring tonight to you. So at this point he's on right now, Joe Bowen from the collaborative, I'm going to let him take over. Um, and kind of explain what this phase two potentially looks like and what exactly we're going to get into. So Joe, if you're on, you can go ahead.
Yep. Good evening. Hi, uh, like Jeremiah said, name is Joe Bowen, architect at the collaborative. Uh, if I could have the next slide. So essentially what we've done is we did a building assessment of the entire building and then we broke that out into a separate assessment of high priority items. Uh, we've looked at those and kind of put a dollar value that you can see on the screen. That's $455,000 is our estimate, approximate cost right now, hard cost to do these replacements. Next slide. So we're going to go through, uh, kind of the three categories. The first one is essential building maintenance. So I've included some of the photos here. I believe that everybody has, has the assessment. So these are items that we feel are necessary for the building to maintain its integrity. So you can see some of them are replacing bushing holes, flashing and other entry points into the building. Currently, a lot of it's missing. Water is infiltrating the building, blowing, causing degradation, decay. And we don't want to further that damage. Second one is replacing any siding. If you remember from the previous slide, you could see that there was, uh, some of the siding at the roof and other places in the building was falling off. So again, another infiltration point. Replacing any valves, piping. Last year we did have a burst pipe that was in there. There are some areas that pipes are not insulated, insulation is falling off. So if the water's not turned off in the winter, that can have consequences. A lot of the downspouts around the building have failed over the years and that's kicking water back to the building. So if we can stave and fix the issue before, we're already starting to see some foundation issues with water heading back to the building. So if we can remedy that quickly, we don't have more and bigger expenses to incur in the future. And then insulating and providing a climate controlled area in the concession. So as Jeremiah just said, we got some new equipment in there this previous or this past summer. Uh, it was extremely hot in there. We actually did have a failure of some of the fridges and we had some lost inventory. So by insulating that and by putting a mini split in there, we can make that a comfortable working environment for everybody that works in there, but also maintain all of our goods. Next slide please. Life safety items. Um, I think these are kind of common knowledge that these are things that we need to keep up on. So the egress lighting in there, you can tell by the top right folder photo is older. A lot of the, the lighting levels are too low. So we just bump these up. And then there is a transformer that is part of it is right outside of the concessions area. It's older. It is showing signs of failure. So we advise that that gets replaced, just being its proximity to A, the main entrance and B, the concessions. Next slide. And lastly, we have accessibility. So this is not wholesale, making the building accessible. That would be a later phase. These are taking steps in the right direction. So a betterment of the accessibility of the building. So we propose moving the ADA to an area of the building that has an accessible entrance and route into the building. Replacing any of the door hardware currently none of it meets ADA. Retrofitting some of the toilets, sinks, um, to get them usable by people in wheelchairs and with disabilities. And then redesigning the reception desk so that anybody in a wheelchair or again, a disability can, can come and have a conversation. Somebody behind that desk doesn't have to walk out into the public area. So next slide, please. We're going to talk about phase three and what that looks like. Phase three is pool specific. So we have some rough order of magnitude costs to replace the PVC membrane of the pool. That is the actual liner of the pool. That's what keeps the water in. In the photo, you can kind of see that stainless steel that is the gutter. Any overflow of the water comes in, gets filtered and pumped back into the pool. Those go hand in hand. If you replace one, you have to replace the other. The suction at the back of the pool for the water slide, um, currently doesn't meet. So it's a rework on that, getting like a fence around just as a safety issue. And then when we're doing this gutter work, obviously there's concrete that butts up to it. So we need new, um, new concrete around that. And I don't think we had the schedule shown, but this is currently what we're proposing is that this is a 2026 and that would obviously depend on how the monies shake out. And then phase four, also called future phase, would be all the additional items that we're not including in that high priority list. So on the next slide, I'm not going to go through all of these, but these are a lot of the high priority items that were in the building assessment that we're not quote unquote, high priority. So replacing plumbing fixtures, like I said earlier, making the building fully accessible. What that entails is relooking at the locker rooms, redoing the bathrooms, configuring in different ways, putting private showers. So it's not just a single shower in the middle of space. And again, I'm not going to go through it, but updating lighting, replacing the parking lot, um, going down to the lower priority things of just repainting the floors and walls where it's, where it's peeling. Jeremiah, back to you.
Yep. Perfect. Um, yep. Thanks, Joe. So as Joe said, we, we'd be kind of working with them to kind of set this priority list. Um, and if you remember two years ago, when we started this, um, investigation, you had figures anywhere from 10 to 20 million dollars, right? Wanting that big pie in the sky, um, pool. And under the advisement of that current commission, we balked at that and we started to, um, take steps to use this again phased approach. Um, successful year one, right? You see the, the cost at roughly 79,000 that we invested, had a fantastic year. Um, everything went according to plan and now we're starting to look into the future. So at this point, the discussion needs to happen. Um, and I've been talking with Greg and present all to you. You know, one, do you want to do this? But also two, the discussion of how we're going to pay for this. And so I'll kind of pass on to Greg to kind of take this one on.
When it gets to how are we going to pay for it, you pass it on to me. Yeah. So, I mean, there's kind of two choices related to this. Y'all know about the oil trust. Uh, we've had discussions about that in other contexts. There's available from the oil trust currently $395,000. That's two years worth of distributions. It throws off at this point about 190 a year. So when you're talking about uh, this much work, if the estimate is 455, you know, basically we could use oil trust money plus a little bit of fund balance and get, you know, this off-season's work done. When you're talking about the million dollar number for next year, um, you know, you're going to need some other source of funds besides the oil trust. Even though there's enough money in principle there, you can't take it out quickly enough. Uh, that would be five years' worth of, uh, distributions before you would ever get to the point where you could do the, uh, the membrane and the, and the, uh, gutter system. And, and then when, when we were out there, meeting with the pool contractor, we talked about, well, you know, do you need to do the gutters at the same time as the membrane? So the membrane has what Jeremiah, 15 year life?
Yes, roughly.
Those gutters are probably original to the pool. So 50 years old. And so if you do the membrane, and by the way, the membrane is there to cover up the failed gunite that is underneath it, which was how the pool was originally built. Uh, so there's no proposal currently on the table to restore the gunite, rather just to put another membrane back in. But if you were to do the membrane without the gutters, you're counting on the 50-year-old gutter lasting another 15 years. So to six, age 65, which if it fails, in the meantime ruins the membrane that you just spent half a million dollars on. So it's not wise to do one without the other. Uh, so you are looking at a million dollar project, uh, for next off-season, which we'd have to start much earlier than we're going to start for this off-season if we're going to do that. And so that's discussion we'll have to have ongoing over the course of, uh, uh, the next number of months to, to figure that out. Uh, uh, there is no clear, uh, answer as to how that would be done. I mean, you could borrow the money. There's, there is enough money in fund balance to do that. Uh, but there's not going to be enough oil trust money to do it. Uh, particularly if you use what's currently available to do these upgrades over this off-season. So. Would there be any? Your thoughts on all that?
Would there be any opportunity to use any fee trust money on this? Not because it's in the park?
No, it's a, it's a recreation item. We can't use fee estate money for that.
Okay. Thank you.
So there's no plan, um, that's shared that talks about, uh, community opportunities for giving. I think of, uh, the Maple Stadium project. It was clear that there was a division between the school district bond would cover the restrooms, the concession stands, but then it was fundraised for the team room, uh, to come from, um, uh, private dollars. So is there an opportunity here to, you know, 900,000 from oil trust or reserve? And do we shoot a target for 100,000 from within the community, from Quanis, from Rotary, from private individuals, um, to, to help with this as well?
That, that would be one option. Potential option.
That I think helps really relieves the burden on the taxpayer too, and gives an opportunity to contribute. I would support the oil trust.
I would too. I think Jeremiah hit it on the head. Two years ago, when we toured and looked, we knew especially phase two was we were chasing the, the tails. We needed to get phase two going right away. That's, and I know that I, I don't want to say that I want to put off financially, how are we going to handle the future phases? But I think, uh, I'm, I'm very happy about us going after this phase two. There's so many of those things that we saw two years ago, 18 months ago, that really needs to have this kind of work. So, uh, and I too would agree with, uh, uh, using that fund. Uh, and I think it's important that we open up the doors to, to see if we can get some private uh, money for the next step. Phase three and four.
All right. Well, if, I mean, if you're in accord with that, um, I think, uh, our next step would be to try to get a, a scope for a bid package for this off-season's work. We want to do that as soon as we can. Our next step would be to try to get a a scope for a bid package for this off seasons work, we want to do that as soon as we can. Uh, and so. Fingers crossed the bids come in better than the estimate as it relates to that, and we'll still have some leftover for. Uh, phase two here, but or what's really phase three, but. Uh, we'll, we'll get that ready, we'll get a bid out and we come back to you with, uh, those numbers when they're available.
So is my understanding that we're going to use all the oil trust money that's available?
Uh, potentially you you would if if the numbers come in as high as the estimate. You would use up what is available from last year of this year. You know, there'll be another increment next year in our next fiscal year, but that won't. Be relevant to this work that has to be done in the office, that won't be available yet. So there's another hundred and ninety coming in the twenty five, twenty six fiscal year. That's all it throw, all we are allowed to take out of that in any given year, right, there's five million dollars in there, but we take. Was it five percent of the sixteen quarter rolling average of the balance? Anything more on that?
I guess it just to go back to this just maintains the community standard, this isn't the. The grandiose versions that were there before, this keeps the doors open, helps maintain where we are so that, uh. We can continue to be on track with having another s- successful start.
Yeah, yeah, we've we've, you all made the decision that we were just gonna. Incrementally bring this back to, um, you know, satisfactory condition. Uh, like Jeremiah said, we had great progress over the last off season with some of the mechanicals, got them done very affordably. Had a, had a pool with heat, which we hadn't had the year before. Uh, so this will do some things to improve the comfort level and the, uh, and the accessibility and the. And to preserve the building there, uh, you know, over this off season. Anything else Jeremiah? All right. Beal, get to work on that. Our next item is a presentation from the, uh. Alliance Center for Workforce Development. And I'll turn it over to whoever wants to take the mic.
Thank you very much, Greg, um, uh, good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners and Staff. My name is Chuck Chase, I'm with the Alliance Center for Workforce Development. I brought an entourage with me, uh, this evening, if you want to raise your hand as I introduce everybody. Uh, this, we have, uh, we'll start out with, uh, Franco Van Ort, who is a staff member at Align. He's over here, good Franco, he moved on me, uh, uh, and then we have, um. Uh, Ron Griffith, who's the interim director of Alliance Center. Uh, we have, uh. Ben Negron, who is a board member of, uh, a, uh, Alliance Center. And also will be, uh, represents Ola and will be occupying a room or rooms in our building. Lynn Punnett with the Ebyde organization will also be in our building. And we have, uh. Randy Agala, who's the Director of Development, you're going to hear from Randy here in a second with a PowerPoint program. Last but not least Candy Harper, who's also a board member for the Alliance Center. So we, thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity, really appreciate being here, um. We tried to set up a tour of the facility prior to, you know, us making a presentation, some of you were able to do that, others of you were not. Unfortunately, but we were more than happy to arrange that at some later date. On the east side and Randy's going to tell you exactly where that is and what's been happening over there. Uh, because we have no community college in Adrian to speak of, uh, that's the main reason for our Alliance Center for Workforce Development. Uh, we've got a grant from the state of Michigan, we put a lot of money in in the red renovations. And, uh, you'll be able to see, you know, the work that we're doing, I think Commissioner Ben Key was impressed when when he went through that. What we're going to be doing is offering numerous programs, training programs for the unemployed, the underemployed. Current employees, uh, that who need reskilling and upskilling, uh, high school grads who are just graduating from high school. And as a former city commissioner, back when the dragons roamed the earth, uh, I remember we purchased. Land on West Beecher out where flourishes and plastic omnium W two fuels. And I'm thinking, you know, as we're renovating this building, what we could have done with a with a center, if we'd had that for people that needed training. We would reduce that learning curve, you know, immensely because of what we were offering. Uh, a workforce development center back then would make a huge impact, um, uh, on the city. And I remember too, we had trouble really trying to recruit companies to come into the industrial park. And now that we'll have the Alliance Center on the east side of town, we, it's a big bargaining chip. To attract business into the community and have them locate here, add to the jobs, the economy, uh, and so on and so forth. It'll be a a huge draw, so what we're going to do tonight, and Randy's going to close with this, no doubt, come on up Randy. We're going to encourage, we'd like to encourage collaboration with the city to some degree. Uh, and having serious discussions around what we can do to partner with you folks as we move forward. Uh, and begin to create possibly a campus for the organization. And, uh, so Randy's going to show you a PowerPoint program, it's up on the screen and we'll, he'll take you through a lot more information, so Randy, if you would.
Hello, I'm Randy Agala, um, Chuck mentioned I'm the Development Director. For Lonaway now, I've been pretty, uh, involved. In this aligned workforce, uh, center, so if I could have the next slide. We believe this is a catalyst effort. And what we mean by that is you have a lot of incredibly good resources. In the city and county. And sometimes it just takes one drop of. A catalyst to bring it all together, um, you will see in this presentation, this has not been done to my knowledge in the state of Michigan. Certainly not in a rural community. Where you have. Ola, Ebyde, uh, probably Jackson College as a resident. Offering one of their grant programs, Michigan Works as a resident, even though they're in the HR building in the county. Um, and lots of other folks. That we feel will fill out the talent pipeline, you do have organizations in the state that are housed together. And that's what they are, they're housed together, they do not meet together, they do not strategize together. They do not support each other, we met, uh, last week. Uh, in a meeting that really exceeded my expectations with our partners. And, um, Ja- uh, Jamo is there and, uh, along with the folks I mentioned. We had an exceedingly good conversation and how we're going to work together in that building, what the culture of that building is going to be. Um, and how we're going to help each other, fund each other, strategize together, that's not been done. So you are housing in the city. An innovation that has no parallel, if I can have a next slide. Uh, the benefactors of this, as Chuck mentioned, are, uh, our graduates in this county. The day they're out of school and Bob can second this. The school districts then have no financial ability to continue to educate those kids. That their mission is K twelve, the tech center is the same thing. So you have a lot of folks graduating from school, if they're not going on to college. If they're not going into military, if they don't have a job, are, they have no path. And we intend to fill that path for them, we intend to be there for them. Recruit them and get them on an employment path, that's a major, major thing. Um, adults in this community. Because there isn't a community college, there hasn't been, I've been here since seventy six. Jackson College has been in and out, but they haven't really, they went from community college to college, right now they're pretty reduced. At the tech center site, uh, they're doing some online courses, but that's mostly degree stuff, we're talking about courses. For certifications, industry certifications are the biggest thing right now. Credentiaing is the biggest thing right now, you don't have to go get a college education. It's very expensive, a lot of people don't make it through, a lot of people take loans to get there. And most of our employers don't care that you have a college education except in some jobs. They want you to be certified. Um, our latest tech company that's looking to locate here in Lonaway County told us we want techs. We don't need college educated jobs, so in that center will be certification programs, credential programs. So you leave that training with an industry recognized certification, we're starting in January with, believe it or not. Floor installation. Because your major flooring producers don't have anybody anymore to install their floors, they're all aging out, they're retiring. And they don't want just a novel person novice installing their floors, because if it's not done right, it reflects back on their product. That's just one example. So those are the folks, non-traditional populations, which. Is kind of a broad term, but as we've researched where to put this center. Work with Ben and work with Ebyde and work with the city. We've had so much feedback from the residents. I I could name a bunch of them, they're working with us now, we we kind of call them our community navigators. And the feedback is we have the HR building in the county. Um, people have pretty much. Quit going. They don't feel welcome, there's no friendly, we call it front porch. When you go on the building, um, there's cultural differences, there's language differences. When someone walks in this building and I invite you to go to see the building. I I I don't know what the count is here, but we invited you all, I think one or two of you went. We're going to keep inviting you until we get all of you through this building. Because it's amazing, if you knew this building as the Lutheran School. Or the church, restored church, and you see it now, you can't imagine. How cool this building is, right, Mary? Pick on you. This is, this is a state of the art, Pat Favre has been our guy. Leading us, my boss. Uh, Kriegoff Lonaway has been redesigning this, renovating this, we hired an architectural firm to do the inside. This is going to be the friendliest, most state of the art building you've seen, probably at least in Lonaway County, if not beyond. It's going to be inviting to common folks, it's going to be inviting to employers, and yet it's going to have a professional aura. It's going to have an event center, when I was listening earlier. It sounded like you might need an event center to have some of your your community meetings, you can rent our space. So it can haul up to two hundred people or a hundred people depending on how you configure it. Latest technology in a warming kitchen, so, uh, so the non-traditional folks with. Ebyde's incredible shove off the shore and the work that Ben does with Ola. Um, some other of our of our community navigators. That's a real focus of what we're doing, and again, I don't think done anywhere else. Um, and employers have not had, I I've been doing this work here in Lonaway County since nineteen ninety, you can tell I'm an old guy. There hasn't really been a single place for employers to go. A trusted place to say, here's my talent challenge, talent's the number one economic development. Issue in this country, actually internationally. Finding talent, developing talent, because this is in your city. Because this is in your city. I'm hoping that you take hold of this, that you own this, that you want to be a partner to this. That you want to have a relationship with us, because that's how we do work, Ben. Uh, and Lynn can tell you, our meeting last Tuesday wasn't about, well, you're going to be in this office. And we're going to have no guns, no drugs, no these policies, it was, how do we work together? How do we build relationships and how do we break through where no other organizations? In this, in this county or or the state have broken through together. Um, we mentioned a lack of of, uh, community college. A lot of our folks to get certified in CDL or other other certifications have to travel to Grand Rapids, Lansing or Detroit. Once they travel out there and they get that training, they don't come back. We have a tremendous need in this county for CDL. And and we have to attack those things, create that local opportunity, train these folks here and keep them here, so. Think I mentioned, uh, the, uh, K twelve, I do want to mention. And it's no one's fault, it's not the school's fault, it's not the counselor's fault. There are five hundred and thirty five students in our districts to each counselor. So the career education that can, um, usually when I was at least in school back in the other century. You had somebody giving you some career advice. That isn't the case as much anymore because of their other responsibilities to these students and parents, so. When it's five hundred and thirty five to one, trust me, people are looking for some career advice, they're looking for mentors, they're looking for friends. They're looking for a way in and they're looking for people they can trust. In a, in a building they feel comfortable in where they can learn, so could I have next slide? I kind of said some of these things, but I think one of the, one of the, um. Biggest issues that we want to create is in our building. If someone comes to see Lynn and it's not an Ebyde. Uh, resource that they're really needing, she's going to walk someone down the hall to see Ron. If they come in to see Ron and it's not an alliance this, uh, issue, might take them down to see. Ben, so that's the kind of culture we're trying to create, could I have the next slide, I want to get through this, because I know you got a lot on your agenda. Uh, I don't know if this data is, is this pretty good yet, do you think? Oh, good, okay, so we borrow this from Ebyde. Uh, we are on the east side on Shirt Street. There's lots of discussion about what's going on in that building, we have, we have hung signs, future home of the Alliance Center for Workforce Development in Spanish and English. We will give you a tour if you'd like to see the building, actually, it's true for anyone in this room. And if you look at the east side and you look at the statistics that are up there. In terms of a medium household income, no internet, um, low paying jobs. This is the place they have put the center, now this center is countywide. Matter of fact, we built regional partnerships with Hillsdale and Jackson Counties. We got a five hundred thousand dollar grant because of that regional partnership to train people in five different industry sectors. We got a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant to try to understand why there are childcare issues. Which include the rate of pay that you have to provide to the center to have your child in there. The lack of transportation, the the deserts that we have in the county, there's more money coming for that. We got that because we teamed up with Hillsdale and Monroe County, the state S S two, so we are a regional force. We are really looking out, what can we do regionally, where can we learn, how can we develop these pipelines regionally, so on the east side certainly. Um, and we expect to succeed, we expect to be. The tipping point on the east side, we expect and and Ebyde's. History in Toledo has been that you will see other economic community development because of our success, because of the new building. Because of the excitement around what we're doing over here. And we hope that you want to be a part of that, could I have the last slide? Well, it's not the last slide. So on a typical day, I'll just go through this quickly, Ola might be in. The building teaching free Google courses, Jackson College might be working on their. Michigan Jobs New Training Grant, which is an incredible grant, will help our employers. There might be K twelve district counselors in there working with our career navigators who are in every district. The Floor Covering Education Foundation might be in there doing the training on floor installation. Align might be having an economic lunch, which we have one tomorrow, by the way. Um, and Michigan Works might be in there helping us understand who we can train, how we can find funds. Work with individuals that are looking for work. Um, and a corporate CEO, we want this building to be so cool that corporate comes in, sits down, wants to discuss. Where can I find my people, how can I help in this community, last slide please, I know this is the last. So we are asking for your relationship. And the reason we're stating it that way is that's how we do our work. We think there's a lot of things that can come about. Your understanding the importance of this being in your city. And we are going to look for your support. Um, in the future, so I think that's about all I wanted to mention, um, I don't know if any of my colleagues want to comment. Yes, so right now, thank you, Ben. We are renting another, uh, facility to do our industrial training, which is starts with the floor covering, it's on US twelve. Uh, near, um, Harold's Restaurant, uh, Onsted and twelve, we can actually pull. Companies from the region in there to train folks, so if you're flying down US twelve and you see the Alliance Center for Workforce Development, it's not a mirage. Uh, but we are hopefully going to build another building on this campus. And that's why we want to be here today to tell you. And that's why we want to be here today to tell you that that's a very hard thing to do. And we need your help. We need your making this effort visible through the city publications, visible through your advocacy in this community. And to start there, you need to come see us. We'll come see you. We'll tour you through the building. Ron will take you to lunch. He's really good at that. But we want you on board. We want this relationship. And I'm going to tell you one last time, I've been doing this 33 years. There is not an effort like this in the state of Michigan. It's in your backyard. So thank you for your time.
Randy, I, I have a question if I could, please.
Sure.
Have you made this presentation or you plan to make this presentation to the county commission? Would seem that this would be something that we would be asking them for a partnership as well.
I'm working with Jim on that right now. And the tours are going to be open. They have the same issues you do in terms of you can't have more than
Yeah, yeah.
three or four. But yes, sir. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. No other questions on that item? Were there any other items for the work-study session?
First of all, I think in terms of feedback, I didn't have questions for him, but I thought, you know, I'm super excited about the workforce center following, following the tour. And I can't think of two better people than Lynn or Ben to greet someone from the neighborhood and get them to the right, the right place. You think of the Home Depot type of thing of you walk someone to the, the office or down the aisle. I think that's kind of the same perspective that I, I see here with this. You know, and really, we heard from Luke not too long ago about Notre Dame and the repair, working out, reaching out to the trades to say, do we have the skill level worldwide coming here to Adrian to help make these repairs? And recently, when I was in Paris, I saw those craftsmen. And that those were highlighted there outside of the repairs that will open next week. Most recently, the Michigan Depot did the exact same thing with Ford's investment. They didn't have, they wanted to make sure that they had skilled tradespeople to do the renovations of Michigan Depot, and they invested heavily in the neighborhoods to bring those people's skill base up. And when I took that tour and heard about the investment that we have locally here, I'm just excited for the next opportunity for one of our businesses to say, I need this. And then to pivot quicker than we ever could in public schools and create a pathway, as we see with flooring. You know, when, when I was in college, I drove a truck and I'm sure my stepfather would have appreciated virtual reality for training instead of the damage that I did to the side of his truck. So I, I think this is, this is great, a great start, and I'm just excited to see and hear more about it.
Anything else for work study?
I do have a couple of questions. So I wasn't here last time and there was discussion in regards to parking on Mami versus Broad Street and the original for handicap access. And Matt made a presentation saying that he had the idea for Broad Street. And then my takeaway from the discussion as I watched it was the commission leaned towards having parking on either side of Mami by the crosswalk. And then Administrator Elliott, your final words were, I'll take this back in the parking on Broad Street for consideration. So did we land on Broad Street or did we land on Mami, I guess is the question. And my area of support would be on Mami.
Well, I think Mami is, is to address downtown needs generally. For this building, if we were going to add another space for this building, that would want to be on Broad Street. Matt hasn't come back to me with any numbers writing out, so I don't.
So, so multiple Mami and Broad Street?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad I asked that. And then just one other question. It's related to consent agenda. Were the downtown area city council, was that posted somewhere through DDA?
Jay is not here and that was Jay's doing. So I think they really, do you know, Michelle?
I'm online, Greg.
Oh, he's online? Hey, can you answer that question?
Yeah, so that was posted in the, in the newspaper. It was a requirement for that. And it's for the Development Area Council, just for the rework of our TIF plan. It's not a permanent position on the DDA board. We also shared it. I believe we shared it online, but I'm not 100% certain there. But it was posted in the newspaper as per the requirements.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for session? All right, Mary, I'll turn it back to you.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of Resolution R24-047, which is a resolution that will be accepting the title for 214 Comstock from the county?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the consent agenda, may I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda?
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the regular agenda, under special orders, special order dash one is a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the downtown special assessment district. At this time, we will open up the public hearing to hear comments in regards to this downtown special assessment district, either in person or via Zoom.
Mayor, I would note, we did receive one letter by mail, which I distributed to the commission. This regarding 104 West Mummy.
Hearing no comments. I call this hearing closed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R24-044 is from the assessor. It is a resolution to approve the downtown special assessment district. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Sorry, support.
Are there any commissioner comments or discussion on this resolution? We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Can't talk, sorry. Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution R24-045 is from community development. It is a resolution to approve a fee schedule for the vacant building ordinance. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any commissioner comments on this?
Question, questions and concerns, first and foremost. So as we talk about vacant building registration for a resident, it's $100 plus $10 for each additional unit if multifamily. So commercial and industrial, I think of the Joanne Steele Building. I think of Gallery of Shops. Should those be 100 per building plus additional for units? Because here we have our residents paying more in fees than a commercial or an industrial site for registration.
So my comment related to registration would be that registration is basically the same for every building. Registration is simply setting it up in the system so that we know it's a vacant building. It's just paperwork or computer work, if you will. It's not inspection. And so as I thought about it, I thought, well, each address is about the same amount of work. And so that was the rationale for doing that.
Was that, do we?
Because I think, because the actual inspection then, if it would go up to $500.
The inspection is, as proposed, is $500 for a commercial and industrial property per building.
Right.
You know, as opposed to $100 plus 10 per unit for a residential structure. Also, you know, it's, it's going to be relatively rare that you're going to see a residential structure that's multifamily be vacant. You know, and not have already been through the rental housing inspection program. It's typically just going to be the $100. But if that did happen, there, you know, it could be up to, you know, $120.
We, because we allowed, we talked about this, I believe, we allowed for the, if the, there has been a rental inspection, it's good for so much time. And so if the building becomes vacant, they need to register it, but the, they will not need another inspection, correct?
Right.
So, because the inspection has already been done and certified.
Right, right.
So can we just say 100 bucks for residential inspections?
Good. It's up to you.
I, I think that we, the $10 because you have to navigate a different space. And the criteria would be the same for each space, right?
This is just for the registration, not the inspection?
Yeah, you're right. So it's.
Well, my, my rationale on the registration, if we're back talking about registration now, is that, you know, there is that need to coordinate with the, you know, for a multifamily structure to coordinate with the rental housing inspection program. So it's actually a little more work for a rental, multi-unit rental than it would be for any one single address. But I, you know, I'm fine with it either way.
How would that differ from the Gallery of Shops or the Joanne Steele Building?
Well, if the Gallery of Shops went vacant, it would, there would be no Gallery of Shops, right? It would just be a vacant building that would be X number of square feet.
But the vacant building ordinance could trigger if 90% of the building was empty, correct?
True, but you're still just registering as far as the registration is concerned, that one address.
Okay. The other concern I have relates to a small commercial shop. So I think of, you know, a business downtown, 2,000 square feet or so, and then you're charging $500 for the inspection of 2,000 square foot facility compared to the exact same price if Crimson Holdings became vacant, which is a major industrial site with thousands of square feet, complex systems that need to be inspected and knowledge associated with that.
That stuff would be done in a fire inspection. We also have fire inspections to help with that. So when we're talking about those dynamics, the fire inspection covers much of that.
Yeah, but as a vacant building, so now, so same thing with.
Still need a fire inspection.
So so you have the same price for Crimson Holdings to pay for an inspection as you do for a downtown business that's 3,000 square feet that someone's trying to get off the ground and do the work, but they've been vacant for 60 days. So I would think that it would behoove us to split maybe a smaller commercial development at a lower price, 250, compared to a higher price for an industrial site.
So currently, the ordinance makes a distinction at 30,000 square feet. I mean, the way I thought about it, first of all, it's by, again, by building. And so Crimson Holdings is more than one building. But I took, the approach I took in the proposal is kind of the approach we took with, with the downtown trash fee, right? I mean, are there some places that are bigger and some places that are smaller? Yes. But is it a reasonable fee for everybody on average? Yes. And, you know, we don't know when a building gets registered necessarily, how many square feet it is. And so I err on the side of ease of administration as well. You know, with the, with the per building amount. I mean, you know, we were not inspecting mechanical systems and such, right? This is an inspection pursuant to the property maintenance code. It's not like a construction code inspection or a fire inspection. And so it's a relatively simple inspection. Is it more work if it's bigger? Sure, it is. But, you know, you, you have to generalize in some way to have ease of administration was my idea and what I proposed.
And does this get around the ruling that we can't be making profit on things?
Guarantee you, we are not going to make money on this. We, the community development department doesn't make money, period. It's subsidized by the city.
How many inspections are we looking at? Because this is in effect essentially now, right?
It is. You know, we got to kind of beat the bushes, find these. And I don't know, as I said here, I apologize, how many we have registered at this moment. But I would say it's less than all the number that should be registered. And so we're with the, with the new requirement that we now go inside, we're going to have to do a better job of making sure we find all the properties that fall into this category.
I understand Commissioner Banky's concern about the $500 per building for one building being one size and one building being another size. And it's not to say that we can't amend this at a future date, but I think we should just start. My view is start at this amount. Let's take a look at the size of buildings that are actually vacant and then determine if we need to make a, a break in there because as you said, we don't know what their square footage is. That's not something, I guess maybe we could ask them to register that with us?
Yes, but how do you verify it? I mean, and our assessor has an idea, but you know, like I say, you know, where's the cutoff? Is it 30,000 square feet like it is right now? I don't think there's all that many that fall into that category.
Probably not.
You know, I, like you say, I think this is a good starting point. Fee resolutions are easily adjusted as needed. Let's see how we do.
Is there a difference between industrial and commercial in your mind?
In my mind, not, no, not really. Not for this purpose.
I would, so some of us may have received an email today. It was related to a national blight conference that's coming up and they had speakers there that one of them was the city administrator from the city of Stockton. And I went to their website. So they have a vacant building and abandoned buildings, properties in terms of that communication to get out to residents and building owners and so forth. And some pretty good best practice. And some pretty good best practices that they talked about there specifically related to Blight as well on top of the vacant and abandoned buildings.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution R 24-046 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution regarding point of sale inspection ordinance.
I move that we adopt Resolution R 24-046B.
Support. One second, I'm writing. Are there any Commissioner comments or discussion on this?
Yes. So I did have the opportunity to reach out to the mayor of Monroe. And in May of 2015, they passed their point of sale ordinance, which ours is modeled after. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the ordinance I used to draft this.
And that ordinance has never gone into effect. So it's listed on their, on their website. He emailed me today and said that there was a number of concerns that were brought up by commissioners and it's never been enforced. I called the building department and asked what forms or what the process is to do a pre-sale inspection. And the response that I got was, well, you, as a buyer, would hire a private person to do that pre-sale inspection. So not a point of sale inspection. So that's not in place, which becomes concerning. Also, the fact that currently there's 59 homes that are listed within the city of Adrian. 23 of them have offers and in two weeks were expected to have this go into effect. I understand that this talks about waiving the fees. And while the fees are waived, it does not waive the fact as city administrator Elliott said, that there's a cost to the city. So if we were to say, you know, roughly the 60 homes that we have and the 200 home sales that take place each year, there was $150 fee. We're talking about $39,000 in expenses. That's if it was $150 inspection to the, to the city. So with, with that, I also reached out to the two cities that were, we received the emails from for the National Best Practices in Blight and Tana Bryant, the senior code enforcement officer from Anniston, Alabama. I asked specifically if they have pre-sale inspections in, in that neighborhood. And the response was that they do not have that in the city, but a buyer or the seller can request that typically. Again, those are things that we spoke about. This petition that we had with the 2,273 signatures. What I would like to recommend, because we can do several things. We could call a special election. There could be an election that comes up through either an initiatory referendum. So that's the group, another group could go out and could create a new ordinance. And then it's my understanding, we have 120 days that that has to go on the books as a special election, if that initiatory, they meet the minimum requirements. Okay.
I don't know the answer to that without looking it up.
I think it's 120 or 150 days if it's a new item, not a repeal. Obviously, we know if there's a, if there is a primary, so if we exceed a certain number of candidates for the commission or for mayor, that would trigger an August election. I'd like to offer kind of a compromise, a third option here that we put this on the ballot for the next upcoming election. But with the understanding that we have just approved a major initiative for vacant buildings, I would much rather have our folks focus on vacant buildings and have an effective rollout of that rather than having vacant buildings, having point of sale and the uncertainty there. So if we could freeze the implementation of, of the point of sale enforcement until the next election, but have it go to an election.
People are probably going to be surprised by this, but I agree with Ms. Commissioner Banky. I think that democracy and action is something wonderful and having people vote finally, because I hear this all the time. We didn't get a chance to vote on that. I didn't get a chance to vote on that. Why did you do this? Why did you do that? In the six years I've been up here, I've probably voted 1,000 times on 1,000 different things. And I think it's great. I do. I think it's great that the citizens have banded together. I think my position as a city commissioner is once the city commission votes, my job is to move that vote forward, move that resolution forward. And my position, my personal position is no longer valid because we vote as a commission. I do not vote anymore as a single person. The resolution passed and now it is the resolution of this entire city commission to move it forward. I do believe that we should put it up for a vote because I think that having the community have the chance to be a part of the democracy here is a wonderful thing. I really do. I'm, I have to say that there has been some uncomfortable, possibly almost threatening kind of language coming at, at some of us for our votes. And again, I voted 1,000 different times and you agreed with 991 of them or 999 of them. And one time you don't agree, you think that we're awful people. That, that's not democracy in action. That's uncalled for. And I would like to have that kind of language stop. There are many people who are for this point of sale that again, will not come to these meetings because they feel threatened to speak. Some of them were in the audience last time and told me they would not get up because they felt threatened. So a vote is something that we do in private. And I think we will get a clear rendition of how the whole public feels, not just the ones that are able to come here and are able to speak. So I would like to put it up for a vote. Do I think it's going to pass or not? I have no idea. I really don't. I, the thing is that I trust my, I trust the process. I trust the people up here. Everyone up here thinks that they're doing what's best for the city of Adrian. We're not doing it because we're getting paid. We're not doing it because we are, we're money grabbers or we're hungry for power or any of that stuff. We are up here because we truly love and care for this community. And just because one of my partners up here voted a different way from me doesn't mean that they're a bad person, doesn't mean that they don't love this community, doesn't mean that they don't feel that this is the best way forward. So my position is put it up for a vote. We work on the processes. Maybe pause it, maybe not put it into implementation until the vote happens. I'm okay with that. That's where I'm at.
Does the ordinance allow for private inspections, Greg?
Yes. Just to make it clear, it could be a private inspection that's done as many point, many sales are like when I bought the houses that I've lived in. We've always had an inspection and then that can just be approved, correct? The private inspector would be inspecting differently than a private inspector does in the normal course where they're working for a buyer and they're just trying to find certain things that may be of interest to that buyer. Private inspection for this purpose would be to certify that it's in, that the exterior of the property is in compliance with the property maintenance code. But the ordinance provides for a private option. If you want to hire your own person who's already doing your private inspection on the property to fill out that form, there would be a form presumably that they could certify that it was in compliance with, exterior was in compliance with property maintenance code. And that could be submitted outside of having a city inspector do it.
And the inspection just has to be done by, by the time of the sale?
Correct.
And if you get a private inspector, will the city reimburse that?
No.
So if we want a free, as this ordinance says, that the city will waive the fees, we.
The ordinance doesn't say that, but the resolution.
The resolution, right. And the inspection's good for three years. So people could get the, their home inspected for free this year and use that certificate for future years?
Yes, presumably so.
So with 260 inspections that would take place this year, I would like to offer an amendment to Commissioner Gauss's resolution that we would strike the last paragraph that says the fees required by this ordinance shall be waived and have that replaced with that this ordinance would be implemented until such time as it may be confirmed by a referendum.
Would be or would not be?
Would be or depending on what language you would, would like that. It would be implemented if the, depending on how the referendum goes, whether you're in favor or not.
So it would not be in effect until there was a refer.
It would not be in effect until after the election.
The fee or the ordinance?
The ordinance. Not the ordinance, but the inspection process.
I think we leave the no fees in there and we can just, we can add sentence in there.
There, well, the fees would be a moot point if you're going to.
Right.
The inspection process.
We have a motion on the table and I think.
And I have.
In order, can you hear me out, Commissioner Banky? We have a motion on the table. We can vote on that. If you want to make another motion to make the amendment, you can do that. But I'm not willing to amend, to agree to the amendment on my particular motion.
But at this point, I think it goes to Burke. How's, how's that handled? Because it's, it's not a friendly amendment, which would go back to Commissioner Gauss waiving his amendment.
He has, he has a motion on the floor. So that motion and a second is what you're discussing. You can make a motion to amend it. And then you would have to have a second.
Correct.
And then you would vote on whether to amend it. And if you don't get a second or you don't pass, then you're back to the original motion.
Correct. So at this point, I made a motion and if someone would like to second the emotion, that's where we are.
I will second that emotion. I will second that emotion. No, motion. I think it was a song running through my head.
I, so I, you know, said from the beginning that I did not vote for this. And I am very big, Commissioner Gauss actually told it to me, said it to me earlier today, that I'm always big on, I don't think we should be making some of these decisions that affect the community as a whole and it should go to a vote. I came in here tonight saying I, I just wanted to repeal it because I didn't think to waste the money, to waste the time. I didn't, I just, I knew it was going to cost the city money to be doing these inspections, even though the fees were going to be waived until that vote. I felt with the numbers that we had, that, that they had from signatures, that that literally I looked at the past elections. I looked at all of those numbers and it was very similar to the same total we had coming out to vote. I was, I was really feeling that way, but I will tell you, I've been very conflicted because I am very much a person that always says, true democracy, people need to have their voice, people need to vote, we need to vote, we need to vote. Do we get a great turnout? No, but that's not our problem. We need to be, but we need to let everybody vote. But I was really, really leaning to, I wanting, I wanting it to see, to see it be repealed. But now that you have thrown that into it, because I was concerned about the cost to the city. I was concerned about, about the not having the procedures figured out yet, even though there wouldn't be fees. And so I would be completely agreeable to that amendment as well. But I'm just putting that out there for, for clarity and transparency of how I feel about this. I'm not opposed. I just really, if it's going to go to the vote, I just really don't want to see us doing these yet until it's, until we have the decision from the public as a whole.
So we have an amendment and we have a second.
You are voting, if you're calling us to a vote, you are only voting on whether to amend?
Correct.
The motion. You're not voting to, on the resolution itself. You're voting to, whether you want to amend the motion or not. If you vote yes, you are supporting his, Commissioner Banky's amendment. If you vote no, you are supporting Commissioner Gauss's original motion.
So can I get clarity on how to say this then?
I think I just said it. You don't have to repeat it.
I don't need.
Unless someone has a question.
Okay.
You're voting only on the amendment. This does not pass anything. This just changes the motion. So a no vote is Commissioner Gauss's motion. A yes vote is Commissioner Banky's amendment.
Does the point of sale go into effect with the first vote we're going to take or is that not?
Yes.
Well, it goes into effect in the sense that it will be on the books as an ordinance. But you will have suspended doing any inspections until such time as there's an election.
With the amendment. With the amendment.
With, if you, if, with the.
With the amendment.
With the original, absent any action by you to suspend this, it's going to be effective on November 30th.
So we have a motion to amend it by Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Roberts. So we have a motion to amend it by Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Castleberry?
No.
Commissioner Gauss?
No.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Motion fails. Four yeses, three, I'm sorry, three yeses, four noes.
So moving on to the original resolution, which is to submit the referendum petition proposal to repeal ordinance number 24-002 of the Adrian City Code of Ordinances to the electors and to waive the required fees of the ordinance. We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
No.
Commissioner Banky?
No.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries four to two.
No, five, five to two.
Resolution R 24-047 is from administration. It's in regards to 214 Comstock Stock Street, sorry. And it recommends accepting the title of 214 Comstock from the county to facilitate the removal of the blighted structure located thereon. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Who said the?
Commissioner.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this resolution? We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those?
Thank you to the city attorney for the updated October report.
Moving on to public comment, just to reiterate, there's a three minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and place of residence. And just to also remind you that it is public comment, it is not dialogue back and forth. So you are commenting as the public, but there will not be a response from the dais. We will begin inside the city chambers first.
Lynn Punnett, I live in Tecumseh, work in Adrian. I want to say thank you for getting the action on the corner of Mommy and McVicker. It got cleaned up. The concrete forms were put in today and I trust the concrete is going to get in right before the turn in the weather. And so whoever prioritized that, Gail, I haven't seen her here tonight, but I wish she was. And I just want to thank her for bringing that up last week and for the work you did to get it done. Thanks so much.
Keith Miller, City of Adrian. I oppose the Golf Street sidewalk. As far as I know, the property owners are responsible for the sidewalks themselves. So why does the city taxpayers have to pay for sidewalks on Golf Street? Let the property owners pay for them. If my sidewalks need to be placed, I have to pay for them. Let them pay for their own. That's what I figured. Take that $50,000, put it in a fund and do a spring cleanup. $50,000 would go a long ways to clean enough blight. You can have Stevens come in and do a weekend cleanup. $50,000 would probably do it. One weekend. You could use that money that way. On the corner of Church and Tecumseh. The city paid for a demolition of a building there. It's been over a month, month and a half. The sidewalks are still out on that that corner right there. Somebody's going to get hurt, especially at the night. There's a, you know, they're going to walk down there and then they're going to fall and get hurt. Those need to be replaced. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Carrie Smith, City of Adrian. To say I'm disappointed, yet not surprised would be accurate. The comment was made that putting it to a vote helps the people who cannot come to these meetings to have a say. I do appreciate that, but I would like to recognize this group for the work they did, which was to go to the people. House by house, we didn't target supporters of our ordinance. We didn't know who would be answering that door and we fairly represented every precinct here. Many of you may not be renewing your terms and this is a great way for you to kick the can down the street and it be somebody else's issue. I will say that we are prepared to campaign. We are prepared to put forth city commission candidates that listen, who can collaborate and communicate with each other, who can set aside agendas and get something done for our city in a way that benefits all residents. I applaud what they're doing with Align. I think more community efforts like that to address some of these issues would be great. And when we deal with the roots, we don't spend so much time swatting the branches that are bearing bad fruit like blight. I would also like to point out when you say that they can get their own inspection. When a buyer gets an inspection on a property, they own the inspection, the seller would have to pay for their own inspection. So essentially you're doing two inspections for one property. And not only that, I would encourage you, you did mention something about a survey. I would encourage you to go that route. If you really want to know what's important to people. You've heard what's important to a lot of our residents and I'm I don't know, this is probably going to keep me up tonight and I think one of the comments made that was a little unfair was that this group is or that people have been threatening in their comments. You have people who are deeply passionate and speaking with conviction and doing the work and going door to door and researching. I had a commissioner ask me after the last meeting, why is this bad and why is this good? Aren't those questions you should ask before you vote yes for something? Commissioner Roberts asked how much a special election would cost. A special election wasn't an option. First time the city has ever done a referendum petition. Should everyone have done their research to see what was at stake and what the process was like? That didn't happen either, but we'll continue to do the work and the research and we'll see you in November.
I forgot something. Keith Miller, City of Adrian.
We only have one time for public comment, sorry, but you can talk to one of us afterwards.
Ben Nagron. Adrian, hola. I just wanted to clean up a couple of things from the presentation. Thank you for listening. I wanted to thank Chuck Chase and Randy Galan, the whole team, really excited about the things we're going to be doing on that side of town. Literally, I grew up in the house directly across the street from it. The day we had our big summer festival, my parents were feeding the residents over there breakfast in their home. So talk about something nostalgic and emotional. I do have to though, and I must say that with full transparency, Senator Joe Bellino was instrumental in making sure this thing came alive and became a dream that we can all see as a reality now. And quietly over here is Lynn Punnett, who with Frank Nagel, this could not be the entity that we needed to be, this collaborative effort. And finally, I just want to make sure that people understand that this is a community center in addition to a workforce development center. In fact, the hall that will seat comfortably, if we didn't have tables for everybody, some 200, 250 people, has been named the Chico Martinez Community Hall in honor of Chico Martinez, who we all know to have been a longtime advocate for our marginalized community, our Hispanic and Latino community in City of Adrian. And so while there are a lot of folks here that were hardworking and did get a lot of opportunity to present themselves to you, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't forget the foundational part of this, which was our senator from Monroe, Joe Bellino, Frank Nagel and team at Promedica and then your humble sermon, Ben. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment. Inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment. Are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I want to commend the group that circulated the petitions, did an incredible job collecting those, those, that number of signatures. It's very impressive. I also know from personal experience that many people sign petitions recognizing the need to put something on the ballot, but also want to do more research before they actually vote on it. So, you know, I really believe that you may not have 2,273 votes in favor. You may find other ones as things get publicized. The other thing I want to say, and it was mentioned by Commissioner Roberts, I don't respond well to email threats and there's been many. Does that weigh on my decision? No. I agree again with Commissioner Roberts and I think we all feel the same way that we're here doing the best job that we can for the benefit of the city. It's not about money. It's not about anything other than us taking pride in our city, wanting to make the city a better place. There's been some suggestions tonight, tonight by the public of ways that we can work together, bringing some, Ms. Greewan brought up some great ideas. And I think those are things that we need to look at and and promote in the future. So this isn't a slap in the face to anybody. I just believe strongly that our entire citizenry ought to have an opportunity to express their, what they want. If if in the end, the ordinance gets repealed, that's democracy and I can certainly live with that. I I won't lose any sleep if that happens after an election. Thank you.
And a few other notes, I'd like to thank the residents for passing the local millage that will be very useful in getting our local streets paved and keeping them in good condition. I did speak with Matt Tomaszewski about the McVicker and Mommy. We did have to hire a new contractor to get that done. So just so you know, that's costing more money unless we can get money back from the previous contractor that I don't know how much of that had been paid to get it started. But we did end up going with a new contractor and are getting that done because we do listen to you. Not like what some people have said, we do listen to you. I was able to attend M dot presentation recently and at the next meeting, I will be putting together notes on some upcoming projects that M dot has in the works in the city and in close by that I think will affect you and some of you will be very, very pleased by those. There will be a spring cleanup and we do it every other year. I'm not sure, Michelle, if you, we have dates. I know it will be coming in 2025 June usually. June?
Yeah, we do have dates.
Okay.
Yeah, Michelle.
So there will be a spring cleanup that we already pay within the amount that you pay for your trash. So it's not an additional fee. Do we have a date?
7th and 14th.
Okay, so June 7th and 14th, one on one side of Mommy and one on the other side. Also with Lynn Punnett, we attended the Housing Solutions Conference last week. I attended with Jay Marks for the city and they came away with some, some thoughts, some thoughtful ideas and some possible avenues for for what we can do. It's a challenge because many of the, the, well, the communities that I sat with, they own a lot of property within their communities that is buildable for for housing and the City of Adrian does not. We own about six, seven pieces of property that homes were built on. So it, our, our challenges are a little different, I think, but it was nice that Lynn and I and Jay were able to attend that conference and and actually got to hear some, some new ideas. And lastly, the bicentennial committee is moving along. We will be doing the bicentennial next July 3rd through 6th. We are still looking for volunteers for various things. So if you are interested and are not currently coming to the bicentennial meetings and are interested in being a volunteer, please see Michelle Angie or I to get on the email list. So you know when those are, which is the second Monday of every month at 6 o'clock in the downstairs of the library. And by the way, the Adrian Public Library has been an amazing partner with the bicentennial and they have lots of things planned. Our partnerships that we've developed for the bicentennial comes from all ranges between the city, First Fridays Committee, Civitan.
Ragtime Review.
Yeah, La Ragtime Review, the Lenway Chorus, the Adrian, Lenway Historical Society, the Adrian City Band. They've all come together and want to put on a good weekend. So it's a great collaboration to be a part of. So that was it. That was my list.
I did have a couple of comments. Mayor, first and foremost, thanks for just putting that emphasis on public comment at the beginning. I think that really helps reduce the expectation that there'll be a dialogue with people who may not understand the emphasis of public comment. And that's something that hopefully we can continue to do in the future. Dawn Finney is not here tonight, but did want to recognize her for her work and being named as the Normadell Award winner for the work that she does with the unhoused population from the COC. And then the same day, unfortunately, there was a conflict with the Housing Solutions Conference was Project Connect that took place out at the fairgrounds and a great turnout for community organizations and service groups to connect with those in the most of need. And really a great turnout on that front. As the holidays approach, Toys for Tots is in full swing. There's over 100 collection sites throughout Lenway County with a good chunk here in Adrian. Every year, last year, there were 8,000 toys that were collected here for in Lenway County. They stay in Lenway County for Lenway County kids. And one of the questions that I have frequently is how do families who are experiencing trouble connect with those toys? Well, Toys for Tots were the muscle and we provide those toys to the Tecumseh Service Club, Hudson area schools, and then within Lenway County, or excuse me, within Adrian, its associated charities and Salvation Army are the two most local distribution sites. Want to call also of the Day of Remembrance that will be taking place tomorrow. For anyone that's interested in attending, I'd recommend that you visit the M Society website for more specifics. I won't share those specifics out of concern for individuals' safety and not revealing that place as it involves again, some individuals that are fearful of of their, their safety as they remember those that have been lost. One last thing, we, we heard about. Um, one last, uh, thing, we, uh, we heard about, um, all of us up here doing the best job that we can do for, um, the city, um, by ourselves. And, um, I was taken aback by an email I received, uh, last week by a former city commissioner that, um, questioned my, uh, decision to go to Paris, uh, last week. And, um, for those of you that don't know me, and I try not to, uh, share, um, my personal life too much. But four years ago, I woke up and I couldn't see out of my right eye. Um, I have glaucoma and my pressure was seventy-six and it should be about ten. So when I make choices, um, in two of the twenty-nine meetings that we've had this last year, to spend time with my family, to walk the fields of World War One, to experience Notre Dame. I do so very knowingly and willingly that I'm leaving my seat here. But I also do so knowing that I don't know the next time that I'm going to wake up and not see out of that eye as my glaucoma continues to progress. That being said, I also want to raise awareness to my future attendance. That four point seven centimeters has not been a lucky number for me. I have two masses that I'm meeting with, uh, surgeons, two separate surgeons, because they're on two separate organs this week. The good news is they're not cancerous. The bad news is they're four point seven centimeter masses on your organ. I don't know where the future of that holds, but if I am absent, I want, uh, the community and, uh, those individuals that question my choice to sit here or not, to understand that I'm making other choices, sometimes for the good of myself and the good of my family over sitting here and having a debate. Thank you.
There, another comment, um, completely off the topic, except something that Commissioner Benke and I, I think can agree on. This Friday, Lenaway Cares is having their annual event of begging for a difference. Commissioner Benke will be bagging groceries. I'm not sure what time.
One to two.
One to two. I will be bagging groceries from two to three out at Country Market. I urge everybody to come. He'll collect more money than I do. I, I already figured that out, but, um, any, any tips that you can give to your baggers, there'll be a whole host of individuals out there, I think from, from noon until six. Um, other celebrities, much more famous than Bob and I, um, will be there. The sheriff will be there, just a whole lot of people. So if you've got an opportunity, you're going to be doing your shopping for Thanksgiving and all that food, please come out there and if, even if you're not going to buy groceries, come out and, and drop a couple of bucks in, in the tip jars for all the hardworking people that are going to be begging. Thank you.
Um, Mayor, I'd like to remind everybody about the Christmas parade, holiday parade coming up for the City of Adrian and also getting back to Toys for Tots for associated charities. Um, on the December seventh, they'll be back at Midas, their annual event, collecting toys for the less fortunate or their distribution to people in need.
But I, just, uh, a disclaimer that that's Toys for Lenaway, not Toys for Tots. Just, but still, still go to the same spot.
And, um, I just want to thank Post Two Seventy-Five for the Veterans Day, um, ceremony. This year it was a little different than in years past. And, um, many veterans commented that they actually really liked it because they felt that there was a better attendance that happened by having it there. Um, I, I felt it was, you know, close to the same, but it was, it was different, but they, um, really, um, tried to make it a really, um, nice event that day. I think having it earlier in the day also helped um, with getting folks out before that lunchtime and then they were heading to go get their, their free meal at Applebee's, because my father was one of them. But, um, but you know, um, just, we were really glad to see, um, um, how many veterans did come out, um, for Veterans Day and, um, and just thank Post Two Seventy-Five for what they did for that day. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.